You can please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Colendorf.
Here.
Vice Mayor Olivera.
Here.
Councilmember Matilde.
Here.
Councilmember Brilio.
President.
Councilmember Herman is absent, but we have the floor.
Next is approval of the agenda, and I have been told that staff would like to pull item D on the regular agenda. Is that still correct? Or do we want to...
It's revised. I'll give you an update to council, but it's not a direction. I'm no longer asking for a direction. I'll simply give an update.
Okay.
And what was that item?
Item D.
B.
He's a boy.
A D and a dog.
He's a dog, I think.
Do you have that to reflect the changes?
I have that.
Okay.
Okay.
With that, is there any public comment on the agenda? Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. The law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Is there any public comment? No? Okay. Next is item four, report out of closed session. Earlier tonight, the city council met related to conference with real property regarding the alley between Stanislas and Monctown Elementary. Direction was given to staff. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, the items A through E. Is there any council member wishing to pull an item from consent? Nope. Is there any public comment? With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is regular agenda. Item A, Amy, abandonment of portions of Bird's Way.
Hey, Mayor, council members, I have a revision on this. One of the conditions proposed for the project required that we change the exhibit and the legal description ever so slightly in order to accommodate one of the conditions to prevent us having to come back to you with it. Basically, one of the conditions of approval for this asks to maintain a 20-foot wide roadway, and so I'm going to give you a copy of the amended exhibit, and then I'll go through exactly what that means. So, in case you could not read the map on your agenda, as many of you probably know, the original route of the road crossed through there. And that is the subject of the abandonment that you're working on right now. It now goes through, and in fact, a portion of what was used as the roadway there goes through a portion of the home of the homeowners who are asking for this abandonment. So basically, what you're trying to do is get rid of this area right in here, give it to the homeowners, basically, so that their house is entirely on their property and not partially on city property. According to the conditions of project approval, you would maintain a 20-foot wide roadway along Bird's Way. We also asked in the conditions that this property dedicate, or excuse me, go to the center line of the creek, because as you know, we're trying to do a trail along our parking lot. Upon further review, their property does not go past the center line of the creek, so we're actually not worried with that, about that condition at this time. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this project. It's been in the works, actually, since 2017, and we're happy to finally be able to bring it to you.
The shape of the red line is different than the shaded area here, so what's the deal?
I was just trying to show you the whole area that was involved, because we were talking about the creek, and we were talking about this area, and we were talking about the roadway. So, I actually have one that, well, this is a better one to go with.
So all we're abandoning is the .03 acres?
Yep. Right?
Right in that front of the house there, kind of.
Yep, and that little teeny sliver that goes right there.
And we're getting rid of what's called Valacito Road. That'll be gone where the dotted line is.
Yep. And I know that there are surveyors here today, and the landowners are also here today, so if you have any detailed questions during the public hearing, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer those questions.
How did the house get built on city property in the first place?
The house was built in 1948, so we don't have an answer to that. We were told that that property was abandoned, and that that property was picked up by the owners at that time. If you look on this map, though, you'll see that our front door is not even on our property.
Can we get you to make your public comment at the podium, so it's on the record?
Come on up.
Thank you.
When we bought this property, they, the map that they gave us from the city, said that they had pinned, this is the map that we got, they had pinned the neighbors' ends of their properties, and that that was all that we needed to buy the property. They told us that, after we bought it, that the property hadn't been surveyed in years, and we were told that this piece of the property was not ours. When we bought the property, I went to the city, and I asked about having this abandoned. I was given a paper that said it would cost me $300. I took the paper to do the information that they requested, and on my way out the door, the woman said, "That'll be $1,000." So we didn't do it at that time. Two years ago, we got money, because I'm retired military, I was given $20,000 by the military, because they had misaligned my disabilities, and I thought we could build a garage. Well, in order to do that, we needed this piece of property. So then they told me it was $1,500, which I gave them a check on August 31, 2017, for $1,500. Well, then they decided that because there are so many sections, that if the house burnt down, we couldn't build it back as one building. It would have to be built as four buildings. Well, here it shows that there is four pieces. They gave me this map. They said I had to draw my house in proportion to this, on this map. So what we did is we took a map that we were given to, because we were told when we bought the house, that we would have flood insurance of $2,500, which was more than the homeowner's insurance. And they told us if we would have the altitude figured, that it might be less. It might be not, but it might be less. So before closing even, we paid $1,400 to have the altitude figured. So now we can land a helicopter in the front yard, and they told us we're well above the floodplain, which at that time, I said, "Well, how far is that?" They said, "Four feet." I went, "Well above?"
Yeah.
So then, we got a letter from FEMA that said the floodplain had moved. So originally, we paid $600 a year, and then about five years in, they said we no longer had to pay it. We refinanced, and the refinance company said we have to pay it, regardless of what FEMA says. So now we're paying $600 a year flood insurance. So from one thing to another, then we had the land surveyed, so we could merge all of this into one property, so if the house burns down, we can build it back.
Good I ask. That's a hell of a story.
Yeah. And it's been 10 years in the whole...
So all these little, all these have their own little APN right now?
Right, every...
Uh-huh, every one. And they told us when they surveyed, that two of the sections actually have exactly the same, you know how they put the measurements in north, south, east, west? Two of the properties have exactly the same things, which is a mistake somewhere, somewhere in somebody's...
Identical, yeah, they shouldn't be identical.
This thing almost looks like miners pitching tents on the crew back in the old days.
Exactly.
That's my line.
This is my 20 by 30 section, yeah.
Don't go over here.
Miss Mayor, council members, thank you for having me up here tonight. My name's Richard James. I'm with Land and Structure. I'm the land surveyor that's helping them work through this project. Couple things. Historically, a portion of Valacito Road has already been abandoned and deeded over to them, and they currently own it. That's one of, I think, the four parcels, the four legal parcels that actually comprises their singular AP number. These are old townsite lots. They were done with a compass and a tape by lines of possession when they were mining here. So there's some areas being made, fence lines were held as boundaries, lots of things going on that have kind of led us to where we're at today. And basically, what we're just trying to do is clean it up, make sure the city has their 20 feet of road right-of-way, handle any utility encroachments we have, make sure we get easements on those, merge their parcels into a singular parcel so that they can go through development in the future, and just have a cleaner overall product for both the city to deal with and the clients. If you guys have any technical questions, I'd love to try and answer them for you.
Do you guys have any?
No.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that open, are you good, Amy?
I'm done.
Okay. If there's nothing else, open it up to public hearing. Any public comment? Nope. Okay, back closed public hearing. Back to council. Is there any further conversation from council?
No.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
But, oh...
Wanted to confirm that that is with the amended exhibit?
Yes.
Yes. A corresponding legal description.
You want me to do it?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay. So I'll make a motion with the amended descriptions.
Exhibit and description.
Say it again.
With the amended exhibit and...
Exhibit and description.
Corresponding description.
Corresponding description, legal description.
Write it down for me.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
I'll second whatever Alvin said.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Yay.
Can you tell me who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Alvin made, and then Veronica seconded.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Good.
There we go.
Next is, second public hearing. Next, item B on the agenda is public hearing to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance 495, establishing the use of hours for city parks. Amy?
Mayor, council members, third time is a charm. This is the third time this has come before you to establish park hours from sunrise to sunset in all city parks, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Any questions from the council?
You have to open to that?
I just want to make sure before opening.
Yeah, it includes the differences for events.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good to go.
Come on up.
Yeah.
Mayor, you have a question for the public?
Okay. Okay, open for public comment. Now you can.
Just a quick question for Amy, if we associated it as an ordinance?
It is an ordinance.
It is an ordinance.
This is the second hearing.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there was an ordinance, because initially, we established the times, but there was no ordinance associated for us to do anything as far as enforcement regarding it. So I just wanted to clarify, because I hadn't heard that part. Thank you.
Yep. Any other public comment on this? Nope. Okay. Public hearing closed. Back to council. Is there a motion to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance 495?
I'll make a motion to waive the second and adopt ordinance 495.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that one? Item C, financial report for the quarter end September 30, 2019, with approval of recommended budget adjustment.
Good evening, everybody. I have copies of my presentation up on the table here, if anyone would like to grab one.
Happy good evening, guys. Merry Christmas.
Bye, Chuck.
See you.
See you back at work. All right. I am here to present you the first quarter financial report. So that's through September 2019. So here's an overview of our major general fund revenues. It's important to note, we do not receive our first property tax distribution until January, so we don't have any property tax yet. However, I've received estimates from the county, and they align with our budget. Motor vehicle license in Lew is the same, we're not going to receive anything until January. But again, our, their projections are on target with our budget. Our sales tax, we've received the first quarter so far. Generally, you receive your sales tax payments two months delayed. And let's see, transient occupancy tax and transaction tax, those are all for the first quarter, and they are all on target with budget. I do have a slightly increased estimate for transient occupancy tax, and that is due to our increased 2% due to the measure that we did just accept the election results this evening. So we are implementing that beginning next month, and so hopefully everything goes smoothly, and so that's where we are with those.
Do we have to pay any fees for that, like we did sales tax?
We do not, because City Hall implements it themselves, us, ourselves. Just a nice thank you to Andrea.
I have a question. With those increases, do we have to worry about gain limit?
We address that with the sales tax measure.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to thank you for that reminder.
On the TOT in your graph, with the favorable 65, 510, was that through second quarter? Or is that a projection?
It's a projection, yeah. That's a, that's a projection based off of, as of, you know, we've only received one quarter, so the projections are very, very loose. I tried to be very conservative with it. We have, yeah, it's really important to remember with the first quarter report, projections are just, they're, you don't have a lot of data to go off of. I did my best based off of historical trends and seeing kind of how this, this first quarter reflected against budget, against prior year, you know, trends like that. So with that one, yeah, I am estimating, I was looking at, you know, if the current trend continues with this, how this first quarter was looking, and then looking at that with the increased 2% in the second two quarters of the year, not because we won't have it implemented for this first, for the third quarter.
For the payments of, like, property tax, they come to us via county?
Second quarter, sorry.
Are they pretty predictable?
I'm sorry?
The payments for property tax in what?
Yeah.
From the county, are they pretty predictable?
Oh, yeah.
When they arrive and all that?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, property tax, we receive about 55% in January, another 40% in June, and then 5% the last property tax distributions in July. And then that, that's going to go along with our other property tax assessments that we have in the city, the LLD and the Green Horn Creek assessments that we get. Those are going to come in those same time periods. And then the motor vehicle license in Lew tax, we get half of that in January, and then we get the same check amount in June, which is very predictable. So looking at a graph of property tax over the past several years, we are aligned with our budget, or the city, the county's estimates align with the budget. Again, we don't get anything till, till January, though. And then I can remind you again, we see that giant decrease there in 2016 and 17 due to the state's triple flip. Would anyone like me to explain what that is again? No? Okay. So we see the, the reverse of the triple flip again in 1617 on, in the sales tax side, essentially switching out property tax for sales tax. So looking at our sales tax, our first quarter was on target with budget, both with our newly implemented transaction and use tax, as well as our sales tax. And then we have the Wayfair decision that was implemented with this first quarter, too. I don't have the data on that yet. We had an estimate about 19,000 additional revenue there, but I will update with the next presentation once we have more data on that. And looking at transient occupancy tax, so our first quarter was a 9% increase over the same quarter last year. However, that quarter was, was down 8%. So it's, it's looking more on target with the year before last, 1718, with just the first quarter revenues, but we did recently just pass our 2%. And so that's estimated to bring in 200,000 additional revenue, but we won't see that full 200,000 until next year, when we have a full year. I do have a conservative estimate for 65,000 for this year, additional revenue.
My understanding, the county's got some deal where VRBO reports TOT. Do we have the same benefit?
VRBO, no. I've been in, I've been contacting, what's the other one, Airbnb, and I've sent several emails to VRBO to get contracts with them. It's like a shot in the dark, it feels like. I've, I had one meeting with Airbnb, and she was like, "Oh, yeah, so we'll send you over a contract." And that was months ago. I've followed up with her several times, so I haven't gotten anything. So I'm just going to continue following up with both of those to get those going.
So, so have we been pursuing individual properties based on their websites?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, because essentially, and then there's, there's another service, too, that I've been researching, that's more like compliance reporting, like, there's a few different companies that do this. They have platforms that then essentially use computers to then look at all the addresses in your city and look at, look at their listings in all the major Airbnb, VRBO, all those different websites, and, and then they can automatically send letters and issue penalties and everything. And so I've been also looking at some of those services, and just need to verify that they are very expensive, and...
They do that for a percentage of the take, or is it a flat fee?
The flat fee.
It is.
Based off of population size and number of rentals in the area. And so I was working with one company to do a cost benefit, because usually, they, they do say you will get your money back, you know, with, with your increased revenue, just trying to make sure that all checks out before we move forward with anything like that. So that is in the works.
Thank you.
See where we go with that. So, gas tax. So you can see the, the red and the blue lines look about $20,000 higher than the prior year. That's with all our new gas taxes that we can see when we pay for gas right now. And then our RMRA is estimated just below $68,000, and this year, the city has Gardner Lane project in our budget for use of those funds. So looking over our general fund expenses, overall, we're on target with, with our budget. There are a few major variances. With fire, we had a very slow strike season, strike team season, so good things and bad things with that. So we had a low revenue, we're down about $300,000 in the revenue, and looking at about down $200,000 in the expenditure side. And then with public works, we do see a major unfavorable variance there of $49,000, and that's due to increased work on the parks in the late summer, fall time, and so we should be able to balance that with workload. Looking at our cash position, we are, so our preliminary June 2019 ending cash was 1.7 million, and of that 1.2 is unrestricted, and so our goal is 2 million unrestricted cash, and we're headed in that direction. Next, we're going to look at our sewer funds. So we are mostly on target with our budget. The major favorable variance you're going to see here is 111,000, and that's due to we are down, we have one vacant position currently, and so that 100,000 will fluctuate based off of when that position is, is filled. And so that was due to the promotion of our CPO, and the backfill of position has not occurred yet. So looking at our sewer debt and capital, I've color-coded some of these projects. You won't see that on your handout, but I'll kind of go over some of them. So the blue projects are the operations and maintenance department projects. They are working currently on the Holman Dam EAP. You should, that's in progress. And then the sledge handling and storage, that's in the planning and engineering phase. You'll see something from that, I believe, next month. The green projects are the admin projects, so we are completed with the rate study and the outreach. Although you won't see the outreach completely expended there, it will be in the next report. And then the impact fee study, we are going to re-strategize how we're going to proceed with that, so stay tuned. The red projects are the engineering projects. The city in Green Horn Creek project is completed, and the sewer collection system improvement, that's the environmental and design portion, and so that is nearing completion, and then that will commence the East Trunk Valacito Road project. And then lastly, with the public works projects, we have the vehicle on there, and with, we're working on the needs evaluation for that vehicle currently. So looking at our sewer funds cash position, we have approximately 1.2 million in unrestricted cash, that's ending June 2019, and with our spend down, our strategic capital spend down of the funds, that will bring us to 891,000. So that's the little dip at the end that you see. Any questions on sewer funds? Okay. On water, it's a similar story to sewer as far as operations. We are mostly on target with budget, and you're going to see that major favorable variance in the operations and maintenance department, and that's due to that one position not yet being filled. Looking at our capital and debt, so blue is the operation and maintenance projects. On SCADA, the SCADA upgrade is going out for quotes. The pH probes have been ordered, and we're waiting for dry weather for painting. Need dry weather for painting. The green are the admin projects, they are at the same point as I previously described for sewer. Red, engineering, we are currently working on the backwash handling and water treatment plant improvement design. And the purple with the public works projects, the vehicle is currently working on the needs evaluation.
What are we buying for 6,600?
It's divided amongst water, sewer, and roads, so the piece and everybody.
Gotcha.
Because they work everywhere. All right. Looking at the cash... Looking at the cash position for water funds, we have four point seven six million preliminary ending for June two thousand nineteen, and we're spending down approximately three hundred thousand to about four point four million. So, now, I'm going to go into our recommended budget adjustment. So, this will include with the major, two major changes that we had to our budget after the budget was adopted. That would be the rate increase and the TOT increase, along with a few other administrative things that have changed since then. So, looking at the general fund, recommend a budget adjustment for the following. In the administrative and finance departments, a increase for the TOT revenue in sixty-five thousand. And then, we have the Central Sierra Planning Commission PERS.
I thought we paid that.
We paid this, but we need the budget adjustment.
We did pay it, but we didn't have it on the final budget back in June.
That was the end of it, right?
Just wanted to, that, so, unfortunately, no. That is getting us current. So, I had many emails with the people dealing with this. It's going to be ongoing. Right now, this payment for the fourteen hundred dollars is getting us current, so that it's like reactivating our PERS account. I may not have the correct lingo in that, this is how she described it to me. So, this is getting us current with our PERS, and then, next year, because now, they're negotiating the dissolution of everything. And so, with that, is going to come annual payments. And I don't remember those estimates off the top of my head, but we can bring that. Once they have them, they're kind of up in the air, they gave us some estimates on that, but that depended on, I think, there was a death amongst the retirees, and so, that greatly reduced the amount that all the jurisdictions were going to have to pay. And so, they're going to bring us updated estimates, once that's in a further along process. So, they're still working on dissolution, and it'll probably be about three to five years of payment on that.
So, what happened to the twelve thousand? What happened to all of that settlement that we did?
I didn't see any record of payment.
Yeah, we didn't find.
I don't think...
But, and this is in communication with Tuolumne County Legal Council. And I think you've got the City of Sonora as well.
Well, all four counties are on the hook for some part of this.
There's lots of people, a part of it.
I think we got to a point, but I don't think it was ever ended or settled.
No, we voted, yeah, we sent a check, and then what happened?
Research it, we weren't able to find.
If you can give me a date that it was approved?
I've got some email.
Who it was sent to? I was given a lot of emails, I went through a lot of our AP records. Was it before two thousand eleven?
No, it was, it would have been the last years.
We shouldn't have to pay for that.
So, I think it was when...
No, it was while I was here. Since seventeen.
Okay. So, I would need to know who we wrote the check to. I looked for the Central Sierra Planning Commission, which we had to send, or even the, was it the Tuolumne County?
I'll send you the emails that I have on some of the exchanges.
Yeah, we looked to see if it was made directly to Cal PERS. We need to know.
Are we talking about two different liabilities? Are we talking about the settlement, and then now, we're on the hook for another PERS? Or is it one in the same?
No, it was two parts, for sure.
Okay.
It was two parts.
So, it could have been the settlement, and now, we're dealing with the PERS.
That's ongoing.
Yeah. It could be.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I tried to look for it.
So, we can work with Churchwell White to see if we can find the settlement agreement, but I think that was also in transition from previous legal council to new legal council.
That does sound familiar, it sounds like you're talking about it.
But, we did do a lot of research to verify this component of it.
Yeah, this wasn't paid, and this was getting us current, and then, what's coming. And it looks like, it doesn't look, the damage doesn't look so bad, as far as the payments going forward. You know, about a thousand dollars or so a year, for a couple of years, so.
Because I would be curious to see if this is just since Central Sierra, we created the devolve of JPA, the previous JPA.
I don't know. Anyway, so that will clean up the budget for that payment. Then, so you'll see this on this budget adjustment in several departments in the general fund, but for our water and sewer service, the general fund is required to pay the water and sewer funds for their water and sewer service. So, City Hall has a two-inch meter, and I've estimated about sixty-two hundred dollars a year that we'll have to pay to the water and sewer funds.
City Hall's a two-inch meter?
It is. We have a nice lawn. In a picnic area. Hey, it is nice. We'll have water there all the time.
It's the capacity for development of the lot.
Yeah, we could get another department store where City Hall is, maybe one day.
Retail behind that.
So, the visitor's center has a three-quarter inch water meter, so that's twenty-three hundred dollars. Building and plant planning, we did a contract with Rourke Rover for five thousand dollars for surveying for the city, and I would like to do a budget adjustment to increase both surveying revenue and expense to align with that contract.
How come, is like the museum got a water meter issue that hasn't been addressed yet? In terms of, how are we doing with, dealing with that? Either because we weren't distributing costs through the meters before.
There's more. There's more than just this page. This is just the first slide.
I thought we were done with the city, but I see. Page two starts out with the museum.
There's more.
Yeah, there's about four or five pages. You can go ahead and cheat and look ahead, and see that there's more. I won't blame you, it's okay. I'm getting there. So, community development has a more reasonably sized meter, it's five eights. So, now, we can start looking about the museum. So, they got an eighty-five hundred dollar water and sewer bill. We do have three meters for them. They have a five and, five eighths inch meter for their main building, and a two-inch irrigation meter. And then, also, at the historic Altaville Schoolhouse, we do maintain that area as well.
It's got a nice lawn, too.
They also have a nice lawn. I don't know if as many picnics happen there, though. For the fire department, I did need to do an adjustment for holiday vacation payout, and then, the firehouse five eighths inch meter for about two thousand dollars. Strike team, I did want to, because of the slow season for strike team, I wanted to decrease the revenue to match the expenditures. And so, that would be a hundred and four thousand. We may end up getting more than that in the end, but any additional revenue that we get from the strike team, I'm recommending that we transfer into the general fund capital reserve that we recently established. After we did the surplus of some vehicles, we've established a new capital fund for public works, fire, and police. And so, any, that's my recommendation, we can, when we get to that further point, we can address that more precisely. The police department has a two-inch water meter for approximately five thousand nine hundred dollar budget adjustment.
We have no lawn.
You do have, I was curious about where all your water goes. But, you can notice theirs, theirs is three hundred dollars less than ours, so they have a little bit less lawn. And then, public works, I do recommend a three, a small budget adjustment for the ADA portable rental. The corp yard has a one-inch water meter, and then, this is going to be our biggest hit to the general fund, but that's our parks department. We have twenty-six thousand two hundred dollars for water, and some sewer for three of our parks. And I have the meter sizes listed below. So, looking at the general fund bottom line adjustment, we had a net adopted budget of three seventy-six. And so, we're requesting a reduction of one oh two, eight thirteen, so that would be a new budget adjustment of two seventy, our new net budget of two seventy-three, five sixty. And so, I discussed this in my report. Thought I had this in my notes, I'm sorry.
So, with these new numbers that we discovered with water?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to look at how to reduce those costs?
For water and sewer?
I know, not tomorrow, but in the future?
So, we would pay the application fee, and then, we could have an engineer evaluate it, just like we would any other customer. And then, what gets decreased from the general fund, then would need to be offset and decreased in the water fund as well. So, I think the only one that probably is going to be a consideration might be City Hall.
Well, and the police department.
But, I think looking at the size of the police department, the actual building.
Yeah, sure.
Is the little, is community development on a separate meter there?
Yeah, and they're on a five eights.
With the park, parks going forward with everything, is that something to consider? Replacing irrigation?
Yes, I think with the park discussion, and if there is any opportunity for park improvements, I think one of the things that Amy talked about was kind of drought resistant and alternative landscape that reduces the water demand. So, I think that that's definitely a possibility, but the biggest hit to the general fund is park, water, and sewer, twenty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to look into like consolidating these meters. I don't really know the specifications on how they're set up, but that could be looked at, because it looks like Gateway Park has two two-inch meters. It's a lot of grass there, but I don't know.
Not that much.
So, then, I just, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Any questions about the general fund recommended budget adjustment? Nope, okay. Next, we're going to talk about our other fund recommended budget adjustment. In transportation project, we received COG reallocation of funds that the city has currently on hand. And so, I recommend increasing revenue and the capital expenditure in seventy-nine thousand dollars and change for that approval of the reallocation of those funds. And so, that doesn't change the bottom line of the transportation project fund. I recommend a budget adjustment for our adopted contract for the CVBG consultant to perform the income survey. We have approximately twenty-five, or we have more than twenty-five thousand in the funds, but that's how much the contract is for, so I recommend allocating those funds for that. So, in gas tax, we do have a water and sewer bill that our gas tax fund will be paying for, and that is the Clifton Island Maintenance, and so, that is in the public right-of-way. So, we do maintain that island with a sprinkler system there. And then, also, we did have our FEMA application for our Bret Hart Road repair approved. We did, it was in the, it's in the final stages of the process. It was completed and approved, and so, we got the estimated FEMA recovery amount, and then, Cal OES takes up another percentage of that. And so, that leaves a cost to the city of approximately eight hundred dollars, and that will be paid for with the gas tax funds. So, I recommend budgeting those gas tax funds to pay the balance.
That was the collapse that we sold the concrete?
Eight hundred dollars.
Good job.
Emily did a fabulous job seeing this, to getting the reimbursement from FEMA and Cal OES.
And so, the documentation of the project, the way that the project was handled, and then, her seeing this process through to get that reimbursement was great.
Nice job.
Fabulous.
I have a question on Clifton Island. I know in the past, I feel like we've had this conversation before, about alternative landscaping? And not watering that. I thought a couple of years ago, we talked about it, and somebody wanted to pave it over. I'm like, no, we don't want to pave it, but...
It's nice rocks, landscaping. The sidewalks that are going in that way?
Yeah.
That is all part of the discussion that's going on now, right now, too.
So, hopefully, this, hopefully, this isn't an ongoing thing, then?
Right, it's going to be, I think, maybe to get rid of it, or to gravel and some low maintenance type stuff. It was being discussed.
Rock texture.
Yeah, exactly. It was being discussed at that meeting, so, is that what you were going to say?
Yes, yeah, so we have a grant through COG, the sidewalk, the bike and pet project, on the north four forty-nine intersection, and so, there is a planned improvement for that.
Okay, awesome.
So, we will just make sure that it calls for some water reduction. Reduction, drought resistance, some alternative landscaping.
Or even no water.
We still want it to look cute.
Well, yeah. It will be cute. And that's on record, it will be cute. All right, so, we have a recommended budget adjustment for the sewer funds, and that includes our new newly adopted rates, so an increased revenue of approximately two hundred thousand. And then, there's a couple of small, small line items that I recommend adjustment on. Public Works phones and the courier service. Our chief was able to negotiate lower costs for that, which was very nice. So, that would change our budget from a negative five ninety-four to a negative three ninety-two, would reduce our deficit. Just to remind you, we do have a planned deficit in our water and sewer funds, and that's to spend down our capital funds on these necessary capital projects. And for our water funds budget adjustment, I have an increase of seventy thousand dollars for the water revenue, and then, a couple of small line items to adjust. The backflow testing revenue, we do want to add seven thousand dollars for a needed hydrant replacement in the Middleton's Shopping Center. And then, again, the courier service and telephone adjustments. And then, the other thing has to do with the newly adopted UWPA fee structure that we have. And so, the UWPA contribution was coming out of the water operation funds, and so, we're going to move that and put that into the new UWPA fee fund that we've established. And so, we're moving, essentially, reducing the expenditures, and so, we have more revenue than to pay for the capital projects. And so, that's going to change our budget, our adopted budget, from a spend down of three eighty-five to one forty-four. And then, to explain the new UWPA funds, this was our old fund. And so, essentially, what we have is it's the trust fund, number two forty. I'm removing the revenue, because we're not going to get any more revenue in that. We've put in our required reserve amount, and we're not, no longer charging the one dollar to the customers. And so, we have that in reserve. We still do have the ten thousand dollars for the, I'm blanking on what that was for.
Quarterly payment.
No, that's, this is the agreement for the emergency action plan. I'm sorry, I'm just blanking on the statement. No, okay. You don't know?
Oh, we did, we did enter into...
Thank you, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Yes. Do you remember?
Local hazard mitigation planning?
Thank you. Sorry, that was on... Oh, thank you, Susan.
So, we're going to share that cost with...
Yeah, and so, the ten thousand dollars was our share, and so, that's still coming out of this, and that will still leave enough cash in the funds, over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the fund as required by our nineteen ninety resolution.
UPUD participated in that, too?
I'm sorry?
UPUD participated in that, too?
So, us, Murphys, and...
Okay.
And so, this is the new UWPA fund that we've created with the new fee schedule. So, we have the UPA meter fee revenue budgeted in this fund, and the UWPA contribution coming out of this fund as well.
Looks good.
That's everything. Let me know if you have any questions, or if you want me to go back over anything.
Any questions from council?
None here.
I don't have any.
No.
Did an excellent job.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any public question, comment? Nope, okay.
We need a motion to approve that budget adjustment? Yes, please.
I'll move to approve it with the adjustments.
Second.
On David?
Aye.
Aye.
Veronica, Minja.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
Okay, on to item D. It is now an update from that, right?
Yep.
Mayor, council members, this is just an update on the status of the James B. Dalton Medical Center. Also, no... Medical Center, also known as Mark Twain Medical Center, and the traffic signal at Stanislaw. As background, one of the primary conditions, not a primary condition, one of the conditions of the project approval was that, in fact, the traffic signal be in place before they get a final certificate of occupancy. The city has, in fact, issued them a temporary certificate of occupancy dating back to October twenty-third. The one condition that they are dealing with at this point is the traffic signal. Staff has stepped in to try to assist them with that. Their goal is to open on January twentieth with the ribbon cutting on January nineteenth. That's a date they set for themselves. So some of their concerns have mainly dealt with timing and trying to make sure that everything is done in time to open on the twentieth. We thought there might have been something we might be able to help them with, but basically it's, it's really the contractor delivering various plans to Caltrans in time for Caltrans to approve them, for the contractor to implement them, and to get the light functioning. That's really the gist of it. We're trying to, it, it basically took us quite a lot of time to dig down and find out exactly what the critical path item was that was delaying or potentially delaying anyone, and it did turn out to be oddly a sidewalk slope. And so we determined that earlier today. We have been on behalf of Mark Twain Medical trying to get Caltrans to expedite that plan, which hopefully was turned in about two hours ago, and we'll verify that and keep working with them to try to make sure things progress and that they're able to open on the twentieth. But I wanted to be able to answer any questions you might have, follow up on any questions you might have, but basically, they are proceeding. I still have optimism that they'll be able to open on the twentieth and receive their final certificate of occupancy. We'll try to keep you updated.
So the sidewalk slope is an issue, and it's holding up the stoplight and the sidewalk completion down there?
Yes, because you have to put in the buttons that allow the crosswalks to function.
Yeah.
And you have to have the sidewalk design finalized in order to put in the buttons that do the crosswalks. In addition, the wiring has not been a hundred percent completed. It's supposed to be completed by the end of the week, but they are working with PG&E, I am told, as well as the electrical engineers from Caltrans, I am told. They were up last Friday, got the poll, all signed off. They are proceeding as rapidly as they can.
Is there some expectation on the part of Mark Twain to open it sooner?
No.
Than the twentieth or the nineteenth?
No.
Or whatever the date was?
No.
No. So it's just a perceived risk on everybody's part that Caltrans and the contractor won't come together to get this done? That's what the nerves, that's what's got everybody's nerves on edge?
Right.
I, I believe so, and it's realistic. The holidays, you know, sort of step in there, and you're expecting plans to get reviewed and.
So, and, and our deal is no, no occupancy certificate unless those things are done. What's at risk for us if, if we put a contingency?
Thank you for asking. Right now, we've issued a temporary, every city type of condition, we could sign off on tomorrow if we had to, either with bonding or what have you. The bottom line is the traffic signal operating. If we were to waive that condition.
Yeah.
We have been told by Caltrans that the city would be liable for any accident that occurred at that intersection if we allow them to open without the signal operating.
Are they aware of that?
They are aware of that.
Okay.
Everybody's been aware of that for quite some time.
Okay.
And I think our RMA would have to be made aware of that, and I think that we probably would not be covered.
Right.
They would not. We don't have a contract to transfer the risk to, so.
We have more risk out of the annex with those kids and the guy that got killed than we do at that intersection. So that's where I have a hard time with the risk management side of it, if it comes down to that, when we've got other issues in this town that are more at stake than that intersection.
And the other side is, why can we, can we go to Mark Twain and just get a declaration of whole harmless for that particular issue?
Something of indemnification.
Yeah.
And what's our history of accidents in that area, right there?
I think in two, what's our guarantee that the work gets finished at that point?
You could always bond to make sure the work gets finished. I, I don't think that's actually, my gut is, that's not going to be an issue. They've gone way too far, the, they've already got contracts executed with all the contractors. They've already committed to pay them.
Is the contract for the light between Mark Twain and their representative contract, general contractor, or is it between that contractor and Caltrans?
Okay, I don't know the exact arrangement. It is a Caltrans encroachment permit. They had to approve the people that were contracted to do it. But it is my understanding that Mark Twain is the one that is contracted to do all of the work for the light.
There's a.
And I think we need to kind of keep in mind the fact that their contractor literally just submitted the plans tonight.
We hope.
These revisions.
We certainly hope.
So, you know, I think that there needs to be some responsibility on the part of the project proponent, and also their, their construction team in making sure that they're pursuing these avenues with Caltrans and PG&E.
Well, from the city's point of view, if we took the extra step of setting something up for indemnification, indemnification with respect to this liability, and Mark Twain was willing to take that on and pay for our legal costs to draft it, would that be a potential as a, as a, as a buffer?
I would defer to legal.
Should this date look like it's in jeopardy?
I, I would defer to legal.
We could look into it. I think it, it warrants a discussion with risk management because, Amy, I have a question for you on this.
Yes.
What are, what is the scope of indemnification that they've agreed to already, to part of the project?
The condition of project approval is our standard indemnification, agree to hold everybody on the planet harmless that's associated with the city. It's that standard clause that we have in every project.
We could look further into it. I think ultimately, if it ever came to asking them to actually pony up any money if something did happen, I think that the time and expense to go through that probably outweighs the waiting in, in just having them resolve this with Caltrans at this point. But we could always look into it.
I guess where I'm coming from is that we want to be encouraging with respect to development in the city.
Right.
Right.
And we should be doing everything we can to try and help people open the door when they want to open the door and, and.
We can.
Everything you said, it's, it just occurs to me that might be the only thing we could do.
We can certainly follow up.
We can't get up in Caltrans.
We can certainly follow up and schedule something and, and double check.
And I get it, the construction issue, and they need to, they need to do the project. But the plan B, if they do all that, they get this streamlined through Caltrans, stamp, stamp, stamp. For some reason, it just, what happens if the light doesn't turn on? Because it worked, and having the same issue they had on Highway twenty-six, I know I, I keep repeating myself on that, but if they, and it takes three months for PG&E for them to do all the testing and getting the timing and all that fun stuff, and that delays it even further, can we have the plan B situation?
I think at that point, if there's a three-month delay because of some coordination effort with PG&E, but I think, just for the record, the city has done everything within the city's control to make sure that we were checked off and done with everything that we have responsible charge for in October. And so I think, you know, even now, we're stepping in, we're going above and beyond in terms of coordinating with both the hospital and Caltrans and the contractor to make sure that we're helping to facilitate the most seamless completion of this project possible. We're even talking with Caltrans about, can you speed up your review process? Can we work to make this, you know, a priority? You know, the hospital too could play a leadership role. They could call Caltrans, and they could similarly try to advocate for their project and their process as well. You know, that is not solely the city's responsibility. I think we need to kind of recognize that as well. And I think also, if we get into a place, we need to ask ourselves, what happens if they aren't in January twentieth? We're not aware that there are any impacts to them if they are not operational by January twentieth. So as far as we're concerned, you know, if it's January twenty-third, we don't know that there's any consequences of, of that issue. So, you know, why we would consider assuming the responsibility for, we've, we've fast-tracked everything within our jurisdictional control. You know, I think that there needs to be some responsibility on the part of the hospital and the contractor to continue to move their process forward as well. So.
Well, I'm not suggesting with what I'm bringing up that we take any responsibility at all. We shouldn't be taking any more risk than, than absolutely necessary, but the indemnification idea is another thing that, we don't know what they're losing per day, but if you build a building and you bring in the staff and then the door is locked, it's costing you money. So.
We can certainly follow up. I will add that we do have some.
I'm not saying asking you to do it, I'm just asking you to research it.
So I think that we could look into the indemnification, and I think that we could, you know, possibly look into if it's beyond the twentieth and we run into a situation with PG&E, but.
Or could we make it?
I'm just kind of cautious about setting this type of precedent, and I think that, you know, from the city's perspective, we, what are the limits of our capacities? And, and so I think I would just leave it at that.
We, we do have some contingencies we have discussed with them, things like temporary lights, like you have at construction sites. The study, the timing study, we have already approached Caltrans and asked if they would be willing to allow them to get a final even before the study is done, the timing study, which makes sense basically to pretty much everybody involved. So that's something we told them we are willing to discuss with Caltrans, and we've started those discussions. So we've, we've started various motions to try to get some contingencies started, but we can add to it looking into the indemnification and at least approaching Mark Twain to see if they'd be amenable to it, if it's possible, if our risk management would try to shoot us if we tried, you know, things like that.
And I don't want to assume responsibility solely either, but.
Right.
To help them along the way, I think is very nice and outstretched hands, and kind of plan B is not a bad thing.
Sure. And, and we are certainly working with them on that. And were that, were it were under our control solely, we'd be happy to bend over backwards.
If Caltrans and PG&E and a whole, the contractor, there's a whole lot of moving wheels.
There are a lot of moving pieces. I think one of the main things was trying to get everybody on the same page, which is what we have spent the better part of the last week and a half trying to do, and I think we're getting closer.
And I appreciate you guys' help. I, I think everybody can recognize you guys all go on above and beyond, it's just.
Absolutely.
Wish I could wave a magic wand.
So we have the dialogue, the conversation, what if, if we do, if you've got to come back to us, and at least like, what are we, what is the real story, what's actually going on, what, I think that we haven't thought that.
Well, thanks to Amy's work, we do know the real story, because I'm not even quite sure they knew what was slowing them down or where the issues were. So I think that the city has done a really good job of being an advocate for the project and working on behalf of both the contractor and the hospital to the best of our ability. And I think the fact that they got where they are today, where they submitted plans, is because of the city's work and the city's effort, so.
Which is a lot.
Thank you, Amy. Sure. We'll keep working, and we'll, we'll check on that. We'll see if they're, they're open to that. And I think I'd do that first before we spend time and our effort having attorneys, et cetera, check on that.
Great, thanks, Amy.
All right, thanks.
No action there. Any public comment? Bring it back to item E, appointment of two council members to serve on the standing subcommittee for employment evaluation and discussion of roles and responsibilities of the committee. Melissa?
Yes, I believe this was council direction to form a subcommittee for the evaluation of the administrator. So I'll just turn it over to you guys to handle the same and appoint the committee members.
So this is to do job reviews, that type of stuff, coming up with a better.
Yep.
Develop the framework of it?
I thought you guys were doing that.
Yeah, I thought you guys.
Whoa.
No, really, truly.
Yeah.
I'm like, yeah, didn't you guys?
You know, it's counter to every bone in my body to volunteer for anything, but.
I know.
I'll do.
I mean, yeah, I really did. I didn't.
No, that's fine, I'll help Joe do, we can do whatever.
I know for sure, for sure, Joe was like.
I had expressed interest in it before, so I, you know.
Was it you, was it Linda? I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, Linda's not here, we can nominate her. I mean, I don't see this being a five-month-long process every day, so I, so I will help Joe do.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to appoint the vice mayor and council member Buleo to serve on the standing subcommittee for employment evaluations and discussion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Dee Dee.
Linda got off easy.
Uh, next is correspondence. We have four items under correspondence. This is informational only. And then next is council report. I'll start to my last with council member Maitoli.
Can I ask a question about the correspondence?
Oh, yes.
The November twenty-first letter to Wheeler, any response to that? That's two, three weeks ago.
So we'll be meeting with him on the twenty-seventh to review that letter with staff.
Okay.
Any other, any other, uh, back to council report, I'll start to my last with council member Maitoli.
Just, DAC is meeting on Thursday morning and doing a review of the year, and happy about infrastructure starting to really go forward, yay! So that's always helpful in regards to being able to develop and bring business and development to angels, and I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, no activity with most of the groups that I'm participating with, LAFCO, CPNA, and Central Sierra Economic Development are all meeting after the first of the year. No activity there. UWPA met last night, fairly routine business with respect to operations and financial stuff. They did a great job in the, in the fall work stoppage on Three Quarter Mile Flume, and the meeting kind of culminated in a real nice recognition for Larry Thompson for his many, many years and contributions to the success of the organization. And we subsequently reported, replaced Larry with Scott Beehill, so Scott will be on the UWPA board as the community member at large going forward. And then the Solid Waste Task Force actually has a meeting scheduled for twelve nineteen, and I'll go to that just to see what's, if it's true. That's it.
Council member Buleo?
I had COG and CTA, and, let's see, we did some budget stuff on the COG, and there were, what else did we do? Oh, John and Tim, Mr. Mutities, we voted them back onto the board because their terms were up. Amanda was not there for that. And then we did, Caltrans gearing up for winter. The Calaveras Transit System is kind of gearing up for winter, and they had a bus already stuck in the snow, and they canceled a few lines when the snow was heavy, but other than that, the Paratransit, they're on time and doing a pretty good bang-up job. That's about it.
Hey, I attended the League Christmas dinner with Melissa and TJ. It was the shortest Christmas dinner. Usually it goes on for about four or five hours, and it was a two hour, two and a half hour. It was short and sweet, it was nice. But a lot of new faces. Also attended UWPA. We also had a resolution from the Sacramento office as well. Did you mention that?
I didn't.
So the.
So the Bigelow and our senator's office came up and presented a resolution to Larry as well, and it was really, really nice. It was a really good, good event. And then I was not at COG or CTA, due to being sick, and that's all I have, other than Merry Christmas, everybody, and see you next year, right?
Happy New Year.
Yeah. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Do you want to hear the calendar?
Calendar.
Oh, sorry, calendar. I was looking at 10.
Okay, our WMA is canceled for tomorrow. Thursday, the 19th, is DAC at 8:30 a.m., as well as Museum Commission at 8:30 a.m., and Solid Waste Task Force.
We'll see.
Maybe. City offices are closed on the 24th and 25th in accordance of Christmas Eve and Christmas. And COG on the 1st of January has been canceled. It's a holiday, and we'll be back for city council on the 7th here.
What's the city hall scheduled for New Year's Eve?
New Year's Eve, we're open.
You're open till regular hours, okay.
You can party later.
Yeah.
So community development will be closed the week of Christmas.
Can we, are we making sure that the public knows that?
Sure.
Okay. Just make sure that there's some kind of communication out there?
I think we've had a sign up for a while.
Okay.
Yeah. And we've been letting them know.
Okay. Okay, and now we can do adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sam, we have, before we start meeting, we have five minutes to the home to about a third of our customers. Saddle Creek, Calypso, Book of Black, with you more, there's a good service we can do.
Well, that's why I was saying...